Welcome, everyone. Thanks for joining. We'll be getting started in just a few moments. Just want to thank you all for joining. Once again, welcome. We'll be getting started shortly.
Thank you.
We really appreciate everyone for being here and thanks for your patience. I think you all may know we're making this information available both live on Zoom and Facebook. So we're just getting connected and we'll get started in just a moment.
Thank you.
All right. Well, good evening and thanks to those tuning in live here on Zoom and Facebook. I want to welcome you to the District 3 School Board Candidate Forum. We appreciate you for spending your evening with us and demonstrating your commitment to public education and to our city. My name is Rachel Tutwiler-Fortune and I am the President of the Jacksonville Public Education Fund. JPEF is a research-driven, independent nonprofit that's working to close the opportunity gap in Duval County. I'm joined by my journalist co-moderator Emily Block. Emily is an intrepid multimedia journalist who covers public education and many other issues at the Florida Times-Junior. You can follow her on Twitter @EMDrums. Our candidates this evening are Robert Abinay, Chris Guerrieri, James Jacobs, and Cindy Pearson, who you will all be hearing from shortly. As a reminder, District 3 represents schools in San Marco, the South Side, Atlantic and Beach Boulevards. Before we begin, I just want to share some ground rules for this evening. Our candidates, who were all able to join us thankfully, we'll start with brief introductions. Each candidate will have just two minutes to introduce themselves and we will do that in alphabetical order. Then we'll transition to the question portion of the evening. We'll alternate the order of respondents so that each candidate has the same opportunity to answer first. Each candidate will have one minute to answer each question and 30 seconds for clarification if they choose to when they are mentioned by another candidate. To help keep us on track this evening, both during the introduction and Q and A portion of the program, my colleague Dryden will show a yellow warning card. When you have 15 seconds left for your intro or response, she'll show a red warning card to please end your sentence and then she'll turn off your microphone when the time is over. In order to get to as many questions as possible, we do ask that you all please keep in mind the time limits that are given. Our questions for tonight have been sourced in collaboration between JPEF staff and our journalist moderator with some additions from our organizational partners. We'll also be taking some questions from those listening in live tonight. So I ask you to please submit your questions in the chat function if you're listening on Zoom or in the comment section if you're with us on Facebook. We'll do our very best to get to as many questions as possible, but please know we might not be able to get to all questions. At the end of the forum, each candidate will have two minutes to make closing remarks. Some of the topics on the agenda to look out for this evening include the reopening of schools and COVID-19, the role of the school board, the half penny for public schools, equity in the Black Lives Matter movement, teacher retention, and parent and caregiver engagement. I want to remind you of some important election information before we begin. The primary election will be held Tuesday, August 18th with early voting from August 3rd through the 16th. And you still have time to sign up for a mail ballot if you wish to. You can do this at duvalelections.com up to 10 days before the election. If no school board candidate receives 50% of the vote during the primary, there will be a runoff between the top two candidates in November. And the general election will be held November 3rd with early voting from October 19th through November 1st. I also want to let you know that you'll be voting on the half penny for public schools, which would fund school building upgrades across our county. We'll be having a community mobilization call on July 23rd at 6:00 PM and invite you all to join us for that. If you'd like to learn more, you can go to jaxpeff.org/vote. Before we dive in, I just want to take a moment to thank the candidates for participating this evening. We really appreciate you all being here. School Board elections provide the community an important opportunity to engage with the public education system. And we truly appreciate the candidates for taking the time to speak directly to voters tonight and for their interest in public service. I also want to sincerely thank Emily Block, our journalist co-moderator, for being here this evening. We are also truly grateful to Channel 4 for streaming this program on their website. So with that, we'll get started with introductions and we'll start with Robert Abinay, then to Chris Guerrieri, James Jacob, and Cindy Pearson. Please take up the two minutes to introduce yourselves.
Thank you very much. This is Bob Abinay speaking right now. Do you want everybody to introduce themselves real quick first?
Absolutely. Thank you, Bob. Oh, Bob, go ahead. You have two minutes to introduce yourself.
Okay, I thought you wanted everybody to say hello. Okay, fine. I'm proud. And by the way, thank you Jacksonville Public Education Fund and all you folks. It's wonderful to be here with you. I'm proud to be involved as an educator for 40 years, both in the classroom, starting with when I worked with these little children in Illinois Children's Hospital School who resided there. They were very seriously disabled children. They taught me as much as I hopefully helped them. They were a great group of little people. And from there, I went on to high school teaching for six years and eventually college. And I also presided eventually over four colleges as either the president or the board chair. All that is really good experience to have when you're trying to involve yourself in educational projects and also to become this wonderful position with the school board. I will tell you that I also for the last two years, we moved here five years ago, mainly because my disabled son needed the medical help in this larger community than where we were at before in Georgia. And I spent two years as a substitute teacher in the public schools. And of course, they put you in a number of different schools. And that's the reason why I finally this last year decided to run for the school board because, you know, when you're involved in a number of schools, you're really involved with this children and all the way up through high school, you begin to realize there's a lot of neat things happening. It's a great school system here, a public school system, but they have some real needs. Some real needs that I know my educational experience can help. And that's the reason why I have decided to become a school board candidate. And you know, right now with the COVID-19 situation, I'm really concerned. And I know that's a question that's going to be coming up in a little bit. And I've been following the board. School Board, a really good group of people are trying their best to figure out what to do during this very stressful time. And I do have some very good ideas for that, too. And you know, one of the things, I mean, I look, the school, putting COVID-19 aside, the classrooms are very crowded, too crowded. The fact is more money is needed? Absolutely. The fact is we need to do some different programs. A number of students aren't going to go on to college. We need to do some more programs for them in the trades and the professional areas, too. And all of those issues are things that I would take up work on, convince my fellow school board members that are important, and we would do because...
Well, thank you, Bob. We really appreciate that. And we'll get to those issues shortly. Chris?
Sorry, I had to unmute myself. Good evening, friends. I want to thank JPEF and for hosting and I want to thank all of you at home for turning in. Often in our opening statements, we are supposed to talk about what we have done or accomplishments. Well, friends, to many of you, many of you know I'm not new to the scene. So I just want to recap real quick. This is my, this will be my 20th year in the classroom and I've been fighting for our public education and the teaching profession through my writing and other advocacy advocacy for almost as long. But instead of talking about what I have done, I want to talk about some of the things I want to accomplish when I'm on the board. First, because of my writing, I will bring long overdue transparency and information to the community because I sincerely believe if people knew how things work, they would want better. And speaking of better, I would insist the district started treating its teachers better. Right now, they're often overworked and greatly underappreciated. Decisions that affect them are made all the time without considering how they do, and that's unacceptable. I would help pro-education candidates like Ben Marcus, Andy Nixon, and Joshua Hicks get elected to the State House because where we do need some changes in DCPS, we have to change Tallahassee even more. I will fight for less testing and more resources. I will fight for the referendum and hire staff because many of our staff don't make a living wage and hire salary teachers. Finally, every school needs a library. Let me repeat that. Every school needs a library. For a district with a reading problem, getting rid of them and many of the librarians was one of the worst things we could have done. And I would want to see rich art programs in all of our schools, not just a handful of magnets. And these are some of the things I have been fighting for for the last 15 years and will continue to do so when I'm elected. If you'd like to learn more about me and see what I have done to help our schools and teachers, please go to my website, mrgfordistrict3.com. Or if you have any questions, please email me at mrgfordistrict3@gmail.com. And thank you.
Thank you, James.
Hi, I'm Coach James C. Jacobs. As you know, I'm running for school board District 3. I want to also dive into my platform, which is very special to me because my platform is about experience, working with ESC and EBD kids over the course of the years, seeing that there is a, there is a lack of attention to exceptional students. There's also a decline in our truancy department, which I was a truancy officer before with Duval County Schools. We went from part-time, I mean, went to full, went from full-time to part-time, which is unacceptable with that many schools in the district, which affects our dropout rate. Another thing that we need to also look at is teachers are our coaches. They haven't had a raise in 50-plus years. There is so much that we must tackle in District 3. Just, just not alone, we're talking about our immigrant community, ESOL kids. They're getting left behind. We're focused on certain schools, but not all 22 schools in District 3. I can say this. With everything going on in the world today, I believe a vote for me is a vote for diversity. And diversity is key for District 3. It's a very diverse district. It needs a diverse representative, as myself. With that being said, I am hoping to go into schools hands-on. Yes, it's a part-time job, but I believe a school board member should be at those schools. Those schools are not assigned to you, I mean, you know, just out of the blue. I believe more presence at those schools will keep us from getting to, getting from going to a half penny sale tax. And again, I want to thank everyone for having me tonight and I'm very honored to be here, but also I also have another engagement I have to get to. Again, it's work-related, have to get to work. But I made it here and I just want to say a vote for me is a vote for diversity. And I hope to see you at the polls August 3rd through the 16th and on Election Day, August 18th. Vote for Coach James C. Jacobs.
Thank you, James. And Cindy?
Thank you. So I am Cindy Pearson. I'm a Jacksonville native. I actually attended Duval County Schools K through 12. And I realized that three of those are in District 3, three of the schools that I attended. I have three children who are all Duval County School students, one in middle school and two in high school now. For the past eight years, I've used my background in event planning and fundraising to start 501(c)(3) organizations in three different schools. And I've supported the schools through fundraising and on the high school level through alumni relations and community outreach and leadership development. This past summer, when I heard about the J-1 Amendment, I dipped my toe into an advocacy role because the mayor appointed school board members didn't sound right to me. And I dipped a little more when I heard about the half penny sales tax, the proposed referendum. And I didn't like what I saw in the relationship between the city council and the school board. And so I just kept pressing in and pressing in and hit a point where I felt like all the advocacy in the world will only take you so far. And at some point, you need to be the person in the seat. And realizing that our school board representative was rolling off, I decided to put my name in for the District 3 School Board seat. A few things I support. I do support the DCPS Plan for School Safety and Infrastructure Repair. I support a new system of accountability for private and charter schools that receive public funds. And I also support collaboration with public, private, and not-for-profit partners to ensure students are ready to learn and teachers can focus on instruction. So I think we do have some really great schools in District 3 and we also have great needs in District 3 and I'm ready to work for all of those schools. Thank you.
Excellent. Thanks, Cindy. And with that, I believe we're ready to turn to our questions and I'll kick it over to my co-moderator to get us started.
Thank you. We're going to start with the issue on everyone's minds, reopening schools next month amid the rise of cases in COVID-19 in Duval County. This morning, Duval School Superintendent Diana Green presented a final version of the district's back-to-school plan, which featured modifications including a mask requirement and a full-time Duval homeroom option for all grade levels. Still, plans are in place for each grade level to have an in-person schooling option with a range from five days per week to two, depending on the grade level. Starting with you, Chris, do you agree or disagree with the new version of Duval, Duval Schools' back-to-school plan? And what would you suggest be done differently if you were on the school board?
Well, thank you for that question. I have to say I completely disagree with the plan. I think it's reckless and dangerous. We are experiencing levels of COVID-19 that are unprecedented. When we closed schools, we had 50 cases a day. Now we're averaging over 700. When we open schools, we know people are going to get sick. We know schools are going to close. So why are we opening? And I want to say that I think we all want to be in school. Everybody wants to be in school, but if it's not safe, what is the point? I think the superintendent bowed down to Richard Corcoran's edict and he didn't, she didn't have to. A lot of districts in South Florida said, "We're not going to do that. We know what's best for our kids. We know what's best for our teachers and we want them safe." I really wish Superintendent Green and the school board would have thought the same way. This plan is going to get people sick. This plan is going to close schools. This plan's going to make things worse and we're going to be right back to where we started. So I completely disagree with it.
Thank you. I'm going to bring it over to Cindy.
Thanks. So I watched almost all of the five-hour meeting today and, and watched the presentation of the plan, the rationale behind it. I listened to the medical experts and also heard about the deliberations of DTU. I support the plan as presented this morning and we'll be putting our children in the hybrid model for middle and high school. I guess we need to clarify until like 24.
Yes. And over to Bob. Bob, you're muted.
Dude, there we go. All right. Thank you. I said I would have liked the plan, except the situation today is dangerous. I totally agree with Chris. We have a situation now where we're spiking. And you know, to me, the health and well-being of the students to me and the faculty, you know, the teachers and the personnel are primary. I don't want them to get ill. I don't want them to bring it home, et cetera. So I really feel that right now, virtual is the way to go. And you know, I'll add one other thing. I was a pre-med student many years ago and I worked in the hospital in respiratory therapy. I was the night respiratory therapist, basically. And I will tell you, things spread so quickly. And people don't realize it. It really spreads quickly. Viruses and bacteria, and this is a virus. And so I'm really worried about opening school up. I mean, even though they build barriers and everything else, you're still crammed in. The buses will be filled going over to the school because that's all they can do. So I...
Awesome. Thanks. Thanks, Bob. I think that's about the time we have for that particular question. But another related question that we're excited to hear everyone's thoughts regarding is the fact that some school board, some of school board members' most important constituents are parents. Cindy, starting with you on this one, would be eager to hear how you would help reach families of students who have dropped off the radar since schools closed in the spring. Families who speak a language other than English, those living in poverty, who are homeless, or grandparents?
Sure. So I think the place to start would be to talk to last year's teacher. That would have been probably the last person who had contact with the family and would know the student and the family well and may be able to give some insight there. If the student has a blue card, you would want to look at that. And then using the staff in the building and social service agencies who may also be serving the families, reaching out to relatives, trying to locate the family and find out what the situation is and, and how we can assist them in getting back to school. Making sure they understand the, the plan and the choices that they have and using translators where needed.
Awesome. Thank you, Cindy. And now we turn to Bob, your thoughts on that question. And you're on mute. You'll have to take yourself off mute.
Unmute. There we go. Sorry. I guess it's automatic. All right. Thank you very much. I, you know, I would do what I've been doing for 40 years when I worked with students and their families and situations. I find them. I find the families. And when we moved into town here, my wife and I, we were working with a group for people who didn't have a home, basically, the homeless. And I was really surprised how many people are homeless out there. A lot of them living in their cars, et cetera. People who are with a different language, I would, like Cindy said, you would talk to somebody who can speak that language. I would get those folks right with me. We would find those people and we would work with them because I think we can't leave them out. They are really an important part. Every one of these people that you mentioned in that question is an important part of the school and an important part of the community. So I would find them and I would work with them.
Thank you, Bob. Chris?
You know, it's my hope the district has already been trying to reach out for these students for months now. But if they haven't, they, in addition to using the district's own resources, they could use, they could partner with community assets like LULAC and the NAACP. And they could use the media to reach out. Once we locate them, we can connect them with social services so they don't fall through the cracks. This, by the way, is something the district could have used CARES funds on but chose not to. But I want to ask everyone at home a question. If the district is having a hard time finding some of these children, what makes you think they'll be able to do proper contact tracing when somebody gets sick or is exposed? What if we find these most vulnerable, vulnerable children and then expose them and their family members to a deadly disease? The district has to rethink its reckless plans. Friends, we can make up learning losses, but we can't make up lost lives. And I have, and it's my sincere concern that the district is putting people in danger.
Chris, we're going to turn to the issue of race. We're living through a transformational time right now with the Black Lives Matter movement. Students are expressing themselves on issues like racism and equality. Bob, what role do you think our public schools can play in creating safe spaces for students to engage in conversations about race as part of the educational experience?
We need to pull them together in action groups. And as I've also done that, we get representatives from the students. We sit down, we talk through it. You know, the students are the customers here. These are the people we're really concerned about. Many times we leave them out of the whole thought about what should we do? So I would pull those students in and their families and really put action groups together and how can we work better together? I think, you know, and I'll just, I'll just throw this in. One of the things I see in the public schools here, for the high schools, an hour 40-minute classes to me is way overboard. If we can knock on some of those times and make it a shorter time, we also have an activity period built in so we can really work with the students much quicker and much, you know, into, and talk about some of these issues, have them work with each other on these issues with good facilitative teachers.
Thank you, Bob. Chris, same question?
Um, I think we should encourage these conversations and do even more to educate our students, not just our students, but our parents and our community members as well. And what happened over the last 400 years, when I was in school, we of course covered the Civil War, but slavery as an institution was barely mentioned. We talked about the Civil Rights Movement for a week, but never talked about things like green books or redlining. And when I was bused as a student, the reasons why were never explained to me. The people that defend Confederate statues and keeping our schools named after Confederate-era figures, saying it will erase history, might not think that way if they realized how much of our history of slavery, oppression, and racial relations were basically erased from the curriculum. We have to allow for these difficult and sometimes painful conversations. And we have to learn from our mistakes so we don't repeat them over and over again. And a couple of questions, we're going to talk about private schools that take vouchers or public money. Well, one of the reasons I'm against them, and we all should be, is the Orlando Sentinel did a long, in-depth article which said that dozens of schools were teaching slaves were free as long as they had Jesus in their heart. What's my point for telling you the story? It's if we educate people, we might not change everyone's minds, but we can change a lot of them.
Thank you, Chris. And finally, Cindy?
Sure. I have four ideas. One is I think we can rethink Wellness Wednesdays and add some of the training and conversation into our Wellness Wednesdays and definitely include students in the planning. I don't, the, what I hear about Wellness Wednesdays is they don't take it very seriously and they're not real excited about the material there. Train teachers to lead discussions. I think ELA and social studies are great subjects where we can have good conversations and use novels and literature as jumping off points for that. We can develop countywide leadership forums for middle school and high school student government leaders and, and work with leaders who can then filter conversations into their schools. And the last thing I think is look for creative ways to address this through service hours. All students need to do so many service hours to graduate and we could put a cross-cultural component in our service hours requirement or at least a suggestion.
Awesome. Thank you all so much. We also know that while we've made significant progress in Duval County, we do have persistent disparities by race in our schools, including along the lines of student discipline, access to gifted and advanced courses, and educational outcomes. Chris, starting with you for this question, what do you think DCPS has done well here and what remains to be done?
Well, Duval has a lot of great things going on. Our dual enrollment program is amazing and our parent academy is a genius idea. We have 14,000 dedicated and amazing staff members and 120,000 amazing kids. But the reality is we have, a lot of times we succeeded despite the district. And this is exemplified by how we treat race. And the district, African-Americans are suspended at three times the rate of the white counterparts, three times. We have six schools named after Confederate-era figures and five of them have between 75 and 90% African-American students. Then where recently we may have equal funding, we have not had equitable funding with our schools and our communities of color. But for decades, for a long time, we didn't even have that. Policy after policy has dragged our children and communities of color down. And just because things are a little better now, I don't think we should forget that. The district needs to take a long, hard look at its policies and how they affect communities of color and eliminate the ones that don't lift them up. I don't have a lot of time, but I want to talk about gifted and advanced classes. They should be in every school, not just some schools.
Thank you, Chris. Cindy, when you think about the persistent disparities by race in our schools, what do you think DCPS has been, has done well and what remains to be done?
Okay, I'm going to start with done well and then go needs to be done. So expanded, expanding the gifted testing... So expanded, expanding the gifted testing was a good move. Having advanced and accelerated programs in each high school was a good move. Creating a third dedicated magnet for IBAP was a good move. It created more spaces and hopefully kept students closer to home who wanted those programs. What we're not doing well is I see the demand for accelerated programs on the middle school level is greater than, than the supply and we need to work on that. As I talk with people when I'm out walking, one thing I hear consistently is about discipline. And as I've spoken with Title I teachers, they feel like behavior aids, behavioral aids would be helpful in the classroom and also addressing fighting among students in the school, which kind of gets back to some of the Wellness Wednesday and the conversation questions that we had earlier.
Thank you, Cindy. Bob, when you think about persistent disparities by race, what do you think's been done well and where do we need to improve?
Well, I'll start off by saying, can you hear me? Oh, we're okay then. Okay, thanks. You know, being a substitute teacher means that I was going to different schools. So it was interesting to see comparison, but what I noticed, a number of things in these high schools especially I went to, they were overcrowded. I mean, I have classes of over 40 students. When you jam that many students in a classroom, you accomplish very little as far as the teaching, learning classes. And as far as the idea of, you know, race in it, I, I was actually very surprised. Sometimes I would be assigned to a class almost of all students of color. And the next class I would get, I'd find one or two students of color in that class. I don't understand why there wasn't more diversity among the classes I was being assigned to. And, you know, the schools were mixed as far as their makeup too, but classes seemed to be almost segregated and that bothered me very much. I don't know if it was accidental or what, but that would be something I would look into for sure. Because that doesn't, that doesn't advance what we need to do, which is getting people to work with each other, learn that we have a lot of similarities that we need to work with, with each other. So thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Cindy, how will you prioritize anti-racism and implicit bias education for yourself and in your position on the school board? And how do you plan to incorporate this necessary education into school, staff, students, families, and curriculum?
So the Parent Academy is doing a series on unconscious bias this summer. I signed up for it and attended the first session and plan to attend as many as I can over the summer. The other thing that I've done is through work, I've participated in IDI, which stands for Intercultural Developmental Inventory. And I got my results back last week and found out that I have a 20-point gap between my perceived intercultural competency and my practicing intercultural competency, which is a pretty standard gap for majority culture people. So I'm working on a development plan. It'll run nine to 12 months and I'll be working, I'm committed to working through that developmental plan to close my personal gap. But I think for, one thing for majority culture people to recognize is that gap and given the makeup of our workforce, further training would be helpful. How to schedule it, how to pay for it, I'm really not sure, but I would love for our school staff to get the kind of training that I'm getting through work.
Thank you. Bob's same question, prioritizing anti-racism and implicit bias education for yourself? And then how does that trickle to educating school staff, students, families, curriculum?
I would do, again, what I've been doing through these 40 years. I would attend those seminars that would help me look at the situation from a different perspective than mine. And that's what I think we all need to do. And, you know, it's amazing when I sit down with students sometimes, like I just, you know, I remember a few years ago sitting down with this, you know, high school student, African-American student who was really upset about what was going on, you know, and I'd listen and listen and say, you know what? I, I don't know what I would do sometimes if I were in your shoes, you know? My anger would probably be raised, and yet that's not going to help, you know? And so sometimes it's really good, those conversations with students, with, with folks. And those seminars for sure, I would go to because I think, again, they point out things that sometimes we don't realize. I'm not African-American. I'm not a person of color. And if I was in those, you know, that situation, what, how does that impact people? And so I really would tend those for sure. And I would get my colleagues to attend it too with me. I'm very good at that. I like to pull people with me. Come on, let's go to this. And that's what I would be doing. Thank you.
And finally, Chris?
Bob, I just want to say I would go with you.
There we go.
One of the first pieces I ever wrote was about how creating magnet schools here in Jacksonville was a disservice to the African-American community. You see, the schools were created so the powers that be at the time could say, look, we are busing white kids into a black community. Without mentioning they were busing them to a nearly all-white school that was state-of-the-art while the black schools still languished and fell behind. Here's, I've written dozens, maybe hundreds of pieces about how the school system is set up against many of our citizens, many of our children of color. And once again, you can find them at my website. That being said, I can't imagine how our parents of color must feel knowing that when their child goes out, that might be the last time they see them, that they might not get them back. They said before, I would like to see a richer curriculum that teaches about slavery and race relations. But I would also like to see some implicit bias training for our education staff and all our staff and our students as well. I think, you know, we're a school system. If we educate people, we can really make a difference.
Awesome. Thank you all so much. Bob, we'll start with you for this next one. What's your opinion on the renaming of the six schools in Duval County currently named after Confederate soldiers? Other school names that you think should be readdressed?
They should be changed immediately. You know, I remember again, coming into town. I tend to get into a lot of neighborhood things. And I got into one group that was trying to figure out, how can we, what can we do with these statues? What can we do with these names? And it seemed like, that was like five years ago, it seemed like it was getting nowhere. You know, we tried and tried and tried to get our word out about what we do, need to do. I'm told, and you know, people don't, I'm, it's hard. I'm from the north originally, okay? I've lived in the south with a couple of different states for maybe about 12, 15 years, but still northerner inside. And I don't understand why we would want treasonous people to be on the names of, the names on these buildings. They were, I know that was important to the South, the Confederates, but they were treasonous people. We should admit that.
Thank you, Bob. Chris, your thoughts, renaming schools named after Confederate leaders, others that need to be readdressed?
You know, I think it's long overdue and the names of the schools should be changed as quickly as possible. Sometimes we admire historical figures despite their flaws, but the reality is Confederate era figures are revered because of their flaws. And also those schools weren't named, always named to revere them. They were named to keep the African-American community in line, and that's just tragic. Of the six schools that have, that are named after Confederate era figures, five of them have African-American student population between 75 and 90%. Could you imagine a Jewish student going to Hitler High School? I can't, but that is the equivalent of what we have done to our African-American students for decades. People might say, well, what about this school or that school? The person named after it has some explaining to do. They weren't perfect. Well, the standard can't be the person was never perfect or never did anything wrong. No school would ever be named after anybody. The standard, however, could be, they didn't betray the country in order to protect slavery. So I say, let's deal with those schools, those six schools now and as quickly as possible. And then we want to change the names of other schools. That is a conversation we can definitely have later.
Thank you very much, Chris. Cindy, your thoughts on renaming the schools named after Confederate leaders and any other schools that may need to be readdressed?
I think five are fairly easy choices. Where I would say maybe slow down a little is with Lee High School. And that's speaking as someone who's worked very hard to establish alumni relations with a local high school, within a local high school. And I'm concerned that, I think, I think the change will happen. But I'm concerned that if we don't consider the alumni and bring them into the conversation, we may end up alienate, alienating a whole group of people who could be great assets in the school. I have seen where alumni have been great contributors to mentoring students and also to giving scholarship money. We've had that for the last two years at the high school. And so I would just say, try to work with reasonable people within the alumni group so as not to alienate a whole group of people in the process of making the change.
Thank you. And we're going to have another two-part question. Chris, what is your perspective on school choice and the use of public funding for charter schools and private schools through vouchers? And secondly, how should the district and the school board provide support and accountability to all schools receiving public funds, including charter and private schools?
I only have a minute? Is that, is that what I hear here? Can I have 14 or 15 minutes?
You have no thoughts on it at all?
You know, I'm all for DCPS providing more options for their students. But I've often said our dedicated magnet program creates a two-tiered system that, that leaves some schools out. So as a board member, I would want to work to bring rich and varied curriculum to all our schools so we can better serve the needs of all our children. But as for charter schools and vouchers, I think we should acknowledge that some do it right and are good partners. That being said, I am completely against any school that takes public money and then is able to pick who they take and keep, which charter and voucher schools often do. And I'm against any school discriminating against disabled and LGBTQ children, which we know that schools of choice do as well. I also don't like that many charter schools are for profit, which means making money, not educating children is their main goal. And I believe that private schools that take public money must take the same set of high-stakes tests that our public schools are required to take. And now those public, those private schools are exempt from them. And Tallahassee should explain why they're so important for one set of schools, but not important at all for the other.
Thank you. We're going to pivot to Cindy.
So very broadly, I understand school choice to mean neighborhood schools, magnet schools, homeschool, virtual school, charter schools. And under that definition, I support parents making the best choices they can for their students at the time that they're making those choices. And that, that's what I've done. That's what my husband and I have done for our children. Specifically, I don't support raising the income ceiling for voucher programs, which has happened recently. I don't want to share money with charter schools. I understand that charter schools have funding streams. And, and they have those funding streams. The number two platform, point in my platform is greater accountability for charter and private schools that receive public funds. I would, I would like to see that in particular, if the referendum is passed, I would like to see the same level of scrutiny for the, scrutiny for the charter schools as our city council has called for, called for for our public schools.
Thank you. And Bob?
You know, I, I was asked when I was in Indianapolis, I was president of a college there, would I be the board chair of one of the first charter schools? And it was a charter school in an African-American community that wanted to teach through the arts, almost like a magnet school. And so, you know, I think there's, there's some value to, you know, putting your curriculum together in a certain way. But I will tell you what my feeling about the charter schools here, stop giving them money. I mean, the public schools need all that money and they're not even accountable to the school board, these charter schools. So I would say, and you know, I've asked board members face to faces, why are you keep raising your hand to give them more money again? Their answer was, oh, you know, the governor would want us to do that. Tallahassee would want us to do that. And my answer is, you're not working for the governor and Tallahassee. You're working for the school, for the students, for the teachers, for the school board. Keep that in mind. You know, we're supposed to be nonpartisan. That's what our position is. I truly believe in nonpartisan, but don't give me the fact that you need to do something that this other group told you you need to do. Thank you. I see my red.
Awesome. Thank you all so much for your thoughts and response to that question. Really quickly, before we pivot to the next, we actually had a follow-up question come in for Cindy with regard to the question about the renaming of the schools. The follow-up question was, would you vote no then on the, the change of the name for Lee High School?
Probably not. I would probably vote yes on that. My, my point is that they're just very strong feelings. And I've spoken with a number of Lee High alumni. I realize some of the comments in the school board meeting last week were out of bounds and hurtful. But there are, there are some reasonable voices in that alumni group. And so if we can change the name without alienating a group of people who could be good allies for us and for that school, that would be my desired outcome.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Cindy. And then as we turn to another very important policy issue, we'll start this time with, with you, Cindy. And this question comes to us from our partners at the PTA. And the question is, sometimes school board candidates run for, for, for office without having hands-on experience in our schools. Whether as a parent or a volunteer, a teacher, can you tell us specifically about the schools in DCPS that you've worked with or the roles that you were in and what impact you made and how you've been affected by those experiences?
Sure. So when we move back, we, our kids started at Hendrix Avenue Elementary. I joined the PTA and then I joined a 501(c)(3), Friends of Hendrix. We were raising money to bridge funding gaps from the budget to what the school needed. And I ran the fundraiser for two years and then I was president for two years. When our students moved to Landon, Landon said, hey, we'd like one of those. And so a friend and I started a 501(c)(3) called Friends of Landon. And I helped them get the fundraiser planned and ran that for two years for them. And then when our kids were getting ready to go to Wolfson, some friends and I started Friends of Wolfson, a 501(c)(3). And we have been the PTSA, we've been the SAC, we've been Athletic Boosters. We've done everything because Wolfson had very little, very few people trying to build into it. And so I worked at those three schools and this past year, 2019, 2020, the Department of Education named me Duval County's Outstanding School Volunteer. So you can see that I have put in a lot of hours.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Bob, turning to you, we'd love to learn about your experience with our schools and the impact you've made and how you've been affected by those experiences.
Well, you know, when you're a substitute, you go to many different schools. And sometimes I was in schools for, you know, four days a week, sometimes one day at this school, one day at that school. Douglas Anderson, Landon Middle, Samuel Wolfson, Inglewood High School. I went to some places outside of my area too, Meridian High School. Every time I was in a school, again, I love working with the students. So if there was something happening, like what I liked about Inglewood is they had a real sort of an international scope to them. They had people from all over the place. And they would occasionally have various things like they had a, you know, an International Day that I would be there and see what they were doing and promote, you know, help them promote what they were doing. It was really good. And, and so I would get involved with the students from the different schools. And one of my thought is, thoughts before I even thought about becoming a school board member is I wanted to get out to the games. I wanted to get to really know the families too of these different school people. So being a substitute teacher, the good part of it is you're all over the place and you can make some comparisons. You can see what's happening that should be changed. The bad news is that you're not in one school, you know, constantly. So I got, I'm getting red. So, but that's, I was always involved in all these different schools. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Chris, your experiences in our schools and the impact you've made and how you've been affected by those experiences?
First, I wanted to go back and address something that Cindy said. She said that magnet schools and voucher schools and charter schools were all school choice. And I got to tell you, I could not disagree with that more. There's a big difference between a magnet school and a magnet program and a voucher school and a charter school. Vouchers and charter schools are part of the privatization movement, which is trying to replace our public schools. And nobody should be confused about that. And also I would say that the concept of choice is very attractive. But when you pull back the curtain, the veneer is dreadful. It is abysmal. And if people knew more about it, they would definitely want change. Real quick for what I, what I've done, I wrote it down so I wouldn't forget. I graduated from DCPS schools. I spent one year as a parent professional in the 90s. This, well, this spring I'll be starting, this fall, I'll be starting my 20th year as a DCPS teacher. I taught at Pine Dell in an autistic unit, what is Paxton Middle in a severely emotionally disturbed classroom. At Ed White in intellectually disabled, varying exceptionalities and general education classes. And the last nine years at Palm Avenue with our intellectually disabled students. And then for 13 years, I've been advocating for our public schools through my writing and speaking. And I hope I've been able to make a difference at every place I've been and everything I've written.
Thank you very much, Chris. Cindy, we want to give you 30 seconds, if you'd like, to respond to Chris's comments on your comments on school choice.
Sure. So I'm basing that on when you apply to a magnet program, you apply through the school choice office of DCPS. And so according to DCPS, magnets are a choice. And I understand that choice is a buzzword in the anti-charter community. Accountability is a buzzword in the, in the charter community. And I've been caught in the crossfire of those two words in this campaign. two words in this campaign, not realizing that I was using buzzwords either time.
Thank you, Cindy. This question is from the NAACP Jacksonville branch. What does community engagement mean to you? Why is it important? And how would you achieve it as a board member for your district? They are asking the candidates to please share what type of activities you will implement to keep your constituents knowledgeable of the DCPS policies, programs, goals, et cetera. We're going to start with Bob.
Well, again, gathering a group of people. I always love to do that, to find out what we can do as a group together to make some difference. You know, when I came into town here, people were really concerned about how many people didn't have insurance. So a group of us got together, formed a group, you know, Floridians Advocating Insurance Reform, tried to really push the idea, we need to get insurance for everybody. And, you know, and there's a lot of communities that the people have very little as far as insurance. Unfortunately, when the new people came into office again, we were thinking some other people were going to get in office, and that kind of went down the tubes. I guess what I'm saying is, it's important to get a real task force of representatives that represent really the issues you're going to look at and the diversity you need in that group. That's what I would do. That's what I've always done. And that makes an impact. Thank you. I see the red. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Chris, next, it's for you. What does community engagement mean to you? Why is it important? How would you achieve it as a board member? And please share activities you'll implement to do that with your constituents and keep them engaged.
I started writing about local education issues 13 years ago. And I would submit them to the Times Union, and their editor, Phil Friends, really believed in what I was doing. He would publish op-ed and a letter each month, because that was how many you could do. And at some point, he said, Chris, you're sending me 30 great pieces a month. I can only print two. You need to start a blog. And that's what I did. So for the last decade, through my writing, I've been creating community engagement. I've been informing the people. I've been creating transparency. I've also been a frequent contributor to the folio and papers throughout the state. And I'm proud to say I've been in the Washington Post a couple of times too, which is really neat. But if I were elected, I think I'd be in the unique position to bring long overdue information and transparency to the district. I know Emily, as a reporter, has been stonewalled or run around more than a few times. That would not happen on my watch, or I would know why. Or she could just come to me, and I would tell her. And then I make this commitment. I will have office hours, a monthly town hall, and before school board meetings, I will make myself available at least an hour before, so I can hear directly from constituents. Being with the constituents is incredibly important to me.
Thank you, Chris. And finally, Cindy?
Sure. Well, I've already started. So community engagement to me means reaching out to meet community members where they are, and school, and school staff and volunteers where they are. So we're walking neighborhoods. We've walked and touched probably 3,000 doors in the district already. And where appropriate, I have conversations with people in their driveways, six feet or more apart. And so I've gotten to meet people in the district. I've gotten to meet some community leaders and understanding that not all community leaders are the people that you think they would be. They wear different hats and look different ways. So I think social media plays a role, town halls play a role. I have a friend who has said, don't confuse the conversation with the work. And so I think it's great to meet with people and have conversations. But if we stop at the conversation and never get to the plan and the work, then we haven't done anything really, except have a conversation. And so I would like to use my platform as a school volunteer and someone who's been doing the work to say, come and work with me and engage people that way as well.
Terrific. Thank you all. Now excited to talk about teachers. Teachers are, of course, the number one most important factor in our schools for student learning. Data shows that fewer young people are pursuing education careers, and that approximately 50% of teachers leave Duval County Public Schools within the first five years. We also know that a diverse teaching force can improve outcomes for students, and our teaching workforce isn't as diverse as our student body. Chris, turning to you for this one first, what can DCPS do to recruit and retain a high-quality and diverse teaching workforce?
I wonder if the audience at home knows that any teacher with less than 12 years experience can be fired for any or no reason. None of them have job security. Then it doesn't help that the district often marginalizes, underappreciates, and overworks our teachers. Pay is an issue too. But I also want to remind people that many of our staff, our support staff, don't make a living wage. And how we treat them is often not good. It's abysmal. I think if we treat teachers like professionals, if we don't overwork them, if we provide them academic and behavioral support, it will be easier to recruit and a lot easier to retain. As for a diverse teaching corps, we must recruit, recruit, recruit. We can target recent grads and teachers from the surrounding areas. Has anybody heard of Teach for America? The district pays Teach for America $7,000 for each teacher they recruit. And for the majority of them, they just stay for two years. What if instead we use that money as a signing bonus for recent graduates or veterans? I bet we could find a lot of great teachers that would stay in the classroom for more than two years.
Thank you, Chris. Cindy, your thoughts on what DCPS can do to recruit and retain a high-quality and diverse teaching force?
Sure. So one thing I think we do is reframe teaching as a profession that requires a skill set. I have great respect for people who can manage a classroom and present a lesson at the same time and do all the things that teachers need to do simultaneously in a classroom. That is not a skill set that I have naturally, and I really respect that. I was trying to think creatively about this. And, you know, it may start with teachers encouraging their students to consider teaching as a profession. And you may want to look for students who qualify for bright futures as good candidates because they're less likely to graduate with college debt if they get bright futures. Several teachers I know have left the profession because they had to work multiple jobs, or they found something that paid them more, and they had debt that they needed to pay off. Something we do well, and that JPEF does, is leader development, providing pathways for teachers to advance and recognizing teachers as Teacher of the Year. Those are great perks and great things that JPEF does.
Thank you, Cindy. Bob, your thoughts on how we can recruit and retain a high-quality and diverse teaching force? You're on mute.
I'm muted, mate. There we are. I said it was embarrassing when I discovered, when we moved into town here, what the teachers were being paid, what the personnel was being paid. If we think that education's important, for gosh sakes, we need to pay them more. That's why people leave. And I've talked to teachers. I spoke to this one teacher. I got to know one of the schools. Every time I was there, we were chatting. He says, Bob, I'm going to leave next year. I said, no, why are you doing that? And this man was extremely good. He said, because they crowd everybody in my classroom. It's overcrowded. They don't listen to what I'm trying to say we need to do. So yes, we need to pay. First of all, why is it taking all this time for us to say that? The school board should have been on this case years ago. The state, the county should have been on this idea a long time ago. They're very underpaid. That's crazy. If you want education to be important, pay them better. They won't leave as much. And you respect them for who they are, professionals. Thank you. I'm sorry about the muting thing.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, a new question. The 2019 Youth Risk Behavior Survey showed that Duval County students are experiencing bullying, considering or attempting suicide, and are doing drugs more than the state average. We'll start with Cindy. How would you prioritize budget dollars for programs for mental health for students, especially post-COVID-19?
Sure. So one thing I think we can do is fund more guidance counselors and really pay attention to students who have IEPs and 504 plans. Some will disagree, but I think preserve normal school as much as possible, including electives, clubs, arts, and sports. And the third really doesn't address this indirectly, it does, but reintroducing trade and technical programs in high schools, giving students an option for high-paying jobs after graduation, which may give them motivation and hope for the future.
Thank you. Next is Bob. How would you prioritize budget dollars for programs for mental health for students, especially post the coronavirus?
My doctorate's in counselor education, so I really see a real lack of number of counselors in school. I mean, I pull them aside sometimes when I'm in different schools to talk with them. I says, how can you handle all of this? We can't. We can't. You know, they need more counselors there. They need more well-trained counselors who can really work with the students. That really is a help. And without that, I'm afraid, you know, things don't get much better. So we need to definitely hire more of those folks. If I was on the board, I would push that issue very much. And nobody could challenge me or should challenge me. That is one of my backgrounds. And I would really say to them, do you know what you're doing by not having the appropriate number of counselors there? You're really putting people at risk. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Chris?
I real quick want to address something that Cindy said. She said that JPEF helps teachers with their advancement. That's kind of offensive to me because I don't want to advance. I love being a teacher. I am right where I want to be. And most teachers I know are right where they want to be too. Now, we want to be treated like professionals. We'd definitely like to get paid a little more. But advancement is not something that we need to worry about. There are so many other things that we can do to help teachers. So I love mental health questions because I've been writing about the need for mental health and social services for over a decade. And this quite often, why a child does poorly in school or acts up in school has nothing to do with school. It's really unconscionable that only after several tragedies have people begun to realize how important those and guidance counselor services are. We need to be proactive rather than reactive. Most people would say something like, partner with community organizations. And I agree with that. But the truth is, we need to change Tallahassee and get them to properly fund education. Schools have become catchalls. A kid's hungry, feed them. A kid's homeless or needs mental health services, provide them. And the truth is, Tallahassee does not even properly fund just educating them.
I'm sorry, I was on mute. Thank you. Cindy, we'll turn to you first, in case you'd like to respond to Chris's comments around teacher advancement and your thoughts.
Sure. I didn't mean to imply that all teachers had to want to move into leadership or administration. But for those who do, I appreciate the training that JPEF offers and the recognition that it is important to train our administrators so that we can have the best possible administrators that we have.
Terrific. Thank you all so much for your thoughts on that question. We now want to talk about the half penny sales tax for school facilities that voters will decide on during the general election on November the 3rd. We're going to start with Bob for this one. Bob, what's your position on the half penny for schools? Are you opposed? Are you in favor? If you are opposed, what do you propose instead to help solve our substantial facilities problem and maintenance backlog?
I am definitely supportive of that. My only sadness is the fact that now the charter schools, again, are getting some money from this too, which I don't think they should be. There's also other ways too to get money. You know, I'm pushing apprentices and increasing those. We need those in the schools. And those businesses that I've spoken to would say, you know, yeah, we like that. We want these people to come out trained in these areas. We can continue that training. Now, those are the people that also will give money for the teachers teaching those programs. So we can get money elsewhere too if we go after that. But as far as the half said, yes, as I said, I'm sad. Everything looks fine until they came back, the charter school folks, and we agreed to say, oh, yeah, we'll give you some money. They shouldn't be doing that. They should not be giving them money. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Chris, your thoughts on this question, your support of the half penny?
Oh, well, you know, I'm absolutely for it. But I want to just piggyback on what Bob said. I think people need to understand what happened. When the mayor and city council fought against the referendum last year, they gave the state legislature time to change how the money was used. It used to be districts decided how the money was spent. And DCPS had a great plan that would have shared with charters based upon their need. But now the district has to share the money proportionally, which will cost the district hundreds of millions of dollars, much of which, because charters can use the money for things like, like say, to pay leases, that will go right into the pockets of the charter school owners. What they do is, the charter school owner not only owns the charter school, but then he owns another company that builds it and then owns the land and then leases it back to the first company. This is another reason why we must change Tallahassee. They have created a two-tiered system, one that favors charters and vouchers, and one does everything it can to harm and hinder public schools. So I am for the referendum. I fought for the referendum last summer, and I'll continue fighting for it as we go forward.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Chris. And Cindy, last but not least, your thoughts, your position on the half penny, for it, against it? If against it, what are your thoughts on how we solve our substantial facilities challenges and maintenance backlog?
Sure. I've been an outspoken supporter of the referendum since last summer.
That was easy. And I quickly want to remind everyone that we are going to transition to audience questions really soon, so please enter those in as soon as you can, so we can get to as many as possible, either through the Zoom chat or on Facebook. We're monitoring both. Chris, should the half penny sales tax pass? What's your approach on how schools should be prioritized to receive upgrades first within your district? For example, should it be by age or by neighborhood or by grade? What does that look like for you?
Well, I think the district already has a formula that is going to upgrade the schools based on like a bunch of factors, like their age, the amount of wear and tear, and the things that need to change. And I think that's a good formula. The district really had a good plan that the city council blew up. And I hope people at home understand that. Your city council and your mayor fought against the city's schools and children, and so some of their donors could get paid. The charter school, there's a bunch of people, charter school donors donated to them, and some of them are going to walk away with millions in public money. Now, one thing I would like to see is for the district to prioritize neighborhood businesses and minority-owned businesses. But I think the district has a solid plan with which schools need the most work and the most help the quickest.
Thank you. Cindy, same question?
Sure. So I looked up the draft of the plan to refresh my memory. For District 3, Phase 1 addresses security and safety upgrades. Phase 2 pretty much reduces portables and works on deferred maintenance. And we would want to start with the worst cases first. And Phase 3, sort of Phase 2, Phase 3 handles the demo and replace. And so there are some schools that are going to be taken down to the ground and either rebuilt, or two schools taken down and combined into a new school. And so that's basically the plan. And with the knowledge that I have right now, that seems like a fine plan to me.
Thank you. And Bob?
Yeah, this sounds like good aspects of the plan that's already there. But I also would do, again, what I always believe in doing, is bringing representatives together from the 22 schools, finding out besides what has already been focused that we should do with money, what are their needs? What are some other needs that we might need to look at? So in case we miss something. So I think that's important, again, to get those folks involved. And so I would add that to the factors with my two colleagues just mentioned. But I would ask them for their thoughts about needs beyond what has already been said.
Excellent. Thank you all so much. And now we're very excited to turn to our audience questions. We have lots of great questions that have been filling in. Again, it's not too late. If you have questions, don't hesitate to submit them via Facebook or Zoom at this time. Cindy, our first audience question, we'll start with you. What do you think the school board is doing well?
I'll speak as a parent who experienced the, we went home for spring break and never went back this fourth quarter. I think they handled that pivot well. The amount of communication, getting laptops out, getting hotspots out, working a deal for internet for people who reduced price for internet, I think they did that very well. I think throughout the summer, the first plan, and then listening to feedback, especially from, well, two things, parents who wanted full-time Duval homeroom as an option, and then magnet parents who didn't want to have to give up their spot because they wanted to be safe. And so I think listening and responding to that, they did well. And then rolling out the plan today, I appreciated the inclusion of medical experts and the thoughtfulness that went into that plan. um, and the thoughtfulness that went into that plan.
Thank you, Cindy. Bob, your thoughts on what the school board is doing well? And you're on, you're on mute.
There we go. What Cindy said was right. I mean, there, there's some really, uh, good things they were trying to work on this summer during this COVID-19 situation, horrible situation. So I have to, you know, applaud them into trying, but, you know, I still don't agree we should send the students back right now because of the COVID-19 situation. So I think, um, I think, uh, you know, uh, what I don't like, what I hear from them sometimes, and I've challenged them, you know, I try to do that in a way that is not embarrassing to them, but if I challenge some of the board members, they seem to vote for things sometimes not focused on the schools as much as sometimes focused on, well, this is what we need to do because the governor, or this is what we need to do because of Tallahassee. Forget that, folks. Be strong enough in your role to do what's right as a school board member. That's what I think needs to happen.
Thank you so much, Bob. Chris, what do you think the school board is doing well?
Earlier in the, in the forum, I talked about dual enrollment. We have an amazing dual enrollment program that was at more schools. And the Parent Academy is a genius idea. Um, so those are some things, those are some programs that the district is, is really ahead of the curve. But I have to talk about, I want to talk real quick about the, the survey that the, they did with the parents in the, after the school year ended. When they did that survey, we were having 50 cases a day. Now we're having 700 cases a day. They did that survey, parents said they wanted choice, teachers said they wanted safety. Their first plan was parents had choice, teachers got nothing. Their second plan is pretty much the same as the first plan, but now we're having 700 cases of COVID a day. Why haven't they re-interviewed the, the, the parents and the community members? I bet there's a lot of parents and community members said, well, you know what? Let's put masks on, let's get some shields up. It's only 50 cases a day, we'll make it through. But now that we're having 700 cases a day, there's some real fear out there. And still, teachers are being ignored. It's unconscionable to me that the district would put teachers and students' lives in danger. It doesn't make any sense.
Thank you, Chris. This question was submitted on Facebook from Maisha De Noz. The question is, what motivated you to run for a position on the school board? And also, will you have the time that's needed to devote to this position if you are elected? And we'll start with Bob.
Well, first of all, I see it as a full-time position. I'm, I'm not going to be involving my, well, except for my family, of course, and, you know, things like that. But no, to me, it's full-time. Uh, matter of fact, people say part-time, and I said, really? How can you be the part-time in this position? Because I feel you need to get around to all the schools. You really need to, you really need to gather all the people to do the things you need to do. So, um, to me, it's not a part-time position. I'll just say that right up front. For me, it would be a full-time position that I would give, using my experience at, and I would work hard at to make sure I can enhance, enhance the public schools and enhance their programs.
Thank you. Chris, same question?
I really wrestled with running for school board. In fact, I got in the race, uh, pretty late. But, um, I have a great job. Um, I love my, love my kids, I love my classroom, I love my school, I love my colleagues. It's amazing. So do I want to give that up? Um, but as the pandemic started to rage, I just came, became incredibly concerned that the district and the school board were not going to take care of parents, teachers, students. And I have to tell you, my fears have been realized with their, with their plans. And I thought, you know what? I know what's been going on in the classroom. I've been advocating for teachers and students in public schools for 15 years. I think I have a pretty good understanding through my teaching and my advocacy that, that the district needs. So I made the very difficult choice to decide to run for a school board. And when I run, I'll have to quit my job, um, a job that I love. But I think bringing change to the district, keeping our children and students and, our children and teachers safe, that's bigger than me. And I always want, and I believe that we should try and do things that are bigger than us.
Thank you, Chris. Same question, Cindy?
Well, I mentioned this in my intro remarks. Um, I got involved, um, and just kept pressing in a little more on advocacy and, and saw the things that I didn't like. And so they got my attention, and when you get your, my attention, you get me as well. And that's really why I decided to run. Um, I do think that I have a contribution to make. I, um, I want to serve, um, the families and the teachers and the community through this role. I do have time to do it because of the nature of the job that I currently have. I will have to resign that job in order to serve on the school board. And so, um, it would be a full-time job for me as well.
Thank you.
Myself here. Um, the next question coming to us from the audience came via Facebook, and, um, we'll start with you, Chris. If you had to eliminate funds from the budget, which area or line item would you cut first and why?
You, you, you hear all the time that the district wastes money. Um, but the reality is they can't waste what they don't have. Tallahassee has systematically underfunded our schools. We would have to add a thousand dollars to the per pupil funding to get back to 2007 levels. Think about that. A thousand dollars today to get back to 2007 levels. We've also cut our maintenance budget and our construction budget. We have cut, cut, cut. Um, so there's, we already have a pretty lean budget. But I guess if I had to cut something, I would start with Dr. Green's cabinet. There are something like 40 members all making six figures and plus. I think some of that money could be better spent in the classroom. Not that I don't think they're hardworking, not that I don't think they provide a role or a service, but if you're telling me I have to cut something, I think that's where I would start.
Thank you so much, Chris. Uh, Cindy, if you had to cut or eliminate funds from the budget, what area or line item would you cut first and why?
Sure. Well, like Chris said, it's a pretty lean budget. Um, I would look for areas of redundancy or obsolescence. We are, um, going into a new era with school, and there may be things that we're doing now that with a hybrid, or if we have to switch to full-time virtual, um, may not be things that we need to spend money on in the future. Um, if I were given a magic wand, this is a little bit of a magic wand situation, um, I would go after unfunded mandates from the state legislature. Um, I think they have a bad habit of passing unfunded and underfunded mandates. And so as long as I get to cut things from the budget, I think I'd like to cut some things from, um, the legislature as well.
Terrific. Thank you so much. Bob, if you had to cut something, what, what are your thoughts?
Uh, I would agree with Chris. I think if I had to cut anything, it would be some of those folks that he mentioned with Dr. Green's group there. The schools can't be, uh, you can't cut anything, really. I'll tell you, being at all the different schools, I see they don't have enough folks already. Instead, I would look at it the other way. I would see, how could I bring in more money? How could developing these apprenticeships with the businesses that already been saying to me, Bob, we want to do, we want to partner with the school, that the board doesn't seem to get that idea? And so I said, well, this guy would, because I think bringing money in from those businesses would certainly help and, and would counter the fact of losing money. Okay? So that's what I would do.
Thank you, Bob. This question is from Zoom, submitted by Erin. And the question is, how do you feel about the school district working with nonprofits to provide support services to students? And we will start with Cindy.
Right. Um, I love it. Collaboration is, um, the third point in my platform. And I specifically mentioned nonprofits as one of the group's, um, categories that we should, uh, collaborate with. And so I am aware of a few. I just learned about the Cathedral Arts Project, um, and, um, like what I read and learned about that very much. So I'm in favor of it. I would like to expand it. And if you have suggestions, I'd like to hear them.
Thank you. Next, Bob?
Well, since I talked about partnerships, collaboration is out there too. I think it's real important to bring groups in that want to help, want to help what you're doing. If it's that situation, I think that's great. I, you know, I always, the only thing I say is, let's talk about who are these groups? Make sure they really want to help out, and let's make sure they, what, what do they want in return is always you have to kind of think about too. If it's that they really want to seriously help the school situation, that's great. Uh, but I think, you know, you need to be a little cautious sometimes in that too. But, uh, yeah, I think it'd be great.
Thank you. And finally, Chris? You're on mute.
Yeah, I, I think partnering with nonprofit groups is amazing. It's something we should do in every instance, every, every opportunity we have. But friends, shouldn't the school system have enough money, have enough resources to pay for everything that it needs? Should we really have to go to the philanthropic, the, the, the donation community and nonprofits to, to, to fill the plug holes? I think the school system should have the funds that it needs to be successful. Um, we're, with nonprofits is great. We need community support and community interaction. My dream would be that, uh, DCPS had enough money to do everything that it needed to do. Um, so yeah, I think partnering with nonprofits is awesome, but what we really have to do is we have to change Tallahassee. Tallahassee's been systematically underfunding public ed. Tallahassee's been systematically bludgeoning public ed, and we have to change it. Because if not, things are not going to get better. We will have to depend on the largest of the wealthy or nonprofits just to get by. And I think we deserve a lot better than just getting by.
Excellent. Thank you all so much. Um, Bob, we're going to start with you for this next question from the audience that's coming to us from Facebook. Uh, what's your plan for supporting classroom teachers?
What's my plan for supporting classroom teachers?
That's right.
Well, you, you, man, there's a lot of, uh, when you say supporting them, I, I take it you mean, uh, I certainly would want their money to go up, okay? The, the fact is, are they getting paid enough? Absolutely not. But I want them to attend workshops and, and, and sessions that could help them to be even better at what they're doing? Absolutely. That way, I would be supporting them. Uh, I go back to the money again. You know, I, as I said, I was shocked to see how little money they were making, and I also was shocked to realize how many other jobs they have to have to bring money home to their families. So I think if we can support them in what they're doing, we also need to listen to what the needs are that we're missing. In other words, and I think Chris has pointed out a couple of, number of times, we need to respect the fact that these are good professionals, that we want to help them prove what they're doing, and also have the money to continue what they're doing. That's important.
Thank you very much. Chris, your plan for supporting classroom teachers?
Since I started my, um, advocating for, for public schools 13 years ago, my central tenet was, the better things are for teachers, the better they will be for kids. If we treat teachers like professionals, if we give teachers the resources they need, if we don't micromanage them and overwork them, the better they will be for kids. We can't continue to do those things to our teachers and expect them to do as good a job as they could, or to stay for as long as that we'd like them to. Um, I mentioned earlier that teachers don't have, uh, work protections. They can be fired at any time. Why can't after a certain amount of years of good service, they get work protections? Um, teachers always have to do extra, extra work. Why doesn't the district give them time to do that extra work? Teachers always have to take extra classes. Why doesn't the teacher give them, why doesn't the district give them time to take those extra classes? We put, we put and pile and pile and pile on teachers' plates until the teachers, until the plates break. And we can't do that if we want to be successful. We have to make sure our teachers are treated like professionals, and we have to make sure they're not overworked and micromanaged. And as Bob's, as mentioned a couple of times, yes, the pay is a serious issue as well.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Chris. Cindy, your plan for supporting classroom teachers?
Um, I think three points. I hope I get to them all. Um, one is on, uh, the macro level, I think, uh, being willing to go to Tallahassee and, um, be a bridge, um, for teachers in Tallahassee to, um, meet with legislatures and speak in session, um, in hearings and, um, advocate for them and, and speak out against proposed policies that are, are not helpful to teachers or to, um, them reaching their goals, or that would put onerous, um, requirements on them. Uh, and then on a micro level, um, being a supportive board member, um, trying to, um, visit schools and not be an, oh no, she's here kind of person, but seen as a supportive presence and, um, and using social media and other ways to shout our successes. We have a lot of, that's going, um, really well in the county, and, um, we need to do a better job shouting our successes and letting people know, um, where we have, that, that we are a much better school system than people give us credit for being.
Thank you, Cindy. Excuse me. This question is submitted from Facebook. This Facebook user asks, knowing that the majority of students in the schools are non-white, should the demographics of the school board represent the demographics of the students in the district? And we'll start with Chris. Chris, you're muted.
I was a minute into my answer before I realized I was muted. Um, that's a really interesting question. Should the demographics of the school board match the demographics of the students? You know, maybe in a perfect world, it should. It, it really should. Um, but the thing is, we live in a world where we have to get things accomplished. And I think that we should have people on the school board who want to accomplish things, who don't want to just nibble around the edge, edges, who, who want to get in there and make change. And, um, that's kind of what I want to do. I want to be in there to make big and bold change. I don't want to nibble around the edges. But, but it's a, it's a fair question, should they represent it? And I think we will have some better, more representation as we move forward.
Thank you. Chris, um, Cindy?
Well, I think we should elect the, given the choices we have, we should elect the people that we feel will do the best job. And if, uh, you don't like the people who are running, then next time around, look for candidates, um, that you would like to support. Um, it's not an easy thing to run. It's expensive. I feel like there are probably, well, there are barriers for me, um, running, and I would think that there would be barriers for other people as well. Um, and so that, that would be my answer, is this time around, elect the people that you think would, would, uh, serve you best. And next time around, um, look for people, if you don't like your choices, look for people, look for candidates to promote who would be more representative, um, or the kind of candidates that you would like to see.
Thank you, Cindy. And finally, Bob?
Yeah, I'm glad there's representatives, uh, who are African-American on the, you know, on the school board now, and Dr. Green and a couple of other folks. And, you know, I think it is important to have representation. But I do agree with my colleagues. The most important thing is, can the person that you want to vote for and elect do the job? Do they have the experience? Do they have the enthusiasm? Do they have the focus to do a job for all people, for all students? You know, Black Lives Matter very much. And I say, if you really think that's true, I mean, it's absolutely true. And like somebody said to me once, it's, Black Lives Matter. And if you don't believe that, then no lives matter too. You know, that's what, in other words, they were saying that, you know, we got to do that, and, and we need to. And I think all the candidates believe exactly what I just said. So, uh, I think it's most important on what the candidate stands for, no matter if they're black or white, or whatever they are. What do they stand for? And they stand, if they stand for your values, then that's most important. Thank you.
Awesome. Well, this next question came to us tonight through Zoom, the Zoom chat function. Um, and the question, I will start with you, Cindy, for this one. Should charter schools and private schools be required to be racially diverse? If so, how should it be accomplished?
I'm going to say I don't have enough experience in the area to answer that question. I've met with a few charter school operators who are operating in the urban core, and I don't know if their schools would be called diverse, but I think they're serving the communities that they're in. So diversity in those schools may look like busing students from other parts of the, of the city in and taking spots away from students who, who live around those schools. And I don't think that, that's really the heart of the question. Um, but I'm, I'm just going to say, I, I don't know enough to answer that question well, so I'm going to stop.
Thank you, Cindy. Bob, your thoughts?
Yeah, they're taking, again, you know, these charter schools are taking money from the school board. I really believe they should be open to all school students. I mentioned that 20 years ago, I was there, that whole area, that charter school was open to all in that area. And, and, you know, and, and the whole idea, I tell you what bothered me. I attended a, a meeting when we could do this live with the school board when there was a charter school screaming that it wanted to be also funded. And the person stood up, one of them, and said, you know what, we're actually going to allow more people in who are of color rather than the 5% of most of the other charter schools allow in. And I heard him say, allow in? I mean, what, that's horrible. Is it, you know, are they just segregating? Is that what's going on here? And, you know, I, so I think the answer to the question is yes, they should be open to all students, period.
Thank you. Chris, your thoughts on whether charter schools and private schools should be required to be racially diverse?
First, I just want to say that I really hated my answer to the last question. I believe in diversity. I wish we had a lot more diverse board and a lot more diverse staff. But I also think we have to think about what people have done and what they can accomplish. As far as charter schools and voucher schools, quite often charter schools and voucher schools, they will discriminate against disabled kids. They will discriminate against LGBTQ kids. Charter schools weed out who they take through their application process. I would encourage everybody to go look up the charter school, some charter school application process, and you'll see things like, how much do you make? Have you ever been arrested? And a big disclaimer which says, if there's anything that's not completely true, you can be arrested. So we have to deal with discrimination at, on all levels. And I think it's baked into the cake with charter schools, and it's baked into the cake with voucher schools, and we really have to do an overhaul for the entire system. Like I said before, the concept of choice is great, but when we pull back the curtain, we don't, we, nobody should like what they see.
Thank you, Chris. This next question was submitted on Facebook. It says, there are over 19,000 students in Duval County who are ESE students who receive the support and accommodations. What will you do as a board member to ensure that their needs are adequately met and that they are not just lost so schools will be in compliance? And we'll start with Bob.
Yes, we definitely, definitely should be reaching out again to all students and do everything we can to help all students. And that to me is from preschool on right to senior year. And if we're not doing that, I think we need to keep our ears and eyes open about where, where are we missing it? You know, where, where are we missing out? So I, yes, we definitely, definitely, definitely need to support all of these students. And I think, you know, when I talk about career stuff and apprenticeships and especially talking about junior and senior, I think even those career things, issues, need to start way back to when students are just coming in, first graders and all that, and having them understand what that means to do some of those particular jobs. So yes, we need to give them a lot of support. And, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm going to be red in a second, so I'm going to be quiet here.
Thank you, Bob. Chris?
Could you just repeat the question real quick?
Sure. That might have been on me. There were a lot of words. There are over 19,000 students in Duval County who are ESE students and who receive the support and accommodations. What will you do as a board member to ensure that their needs are adequately met and they are not just, they are not lost just so schools will be in compliance?
I've been an ESE teacher in the district. This will be my 20th year this fall. My first classroom was a classroom of third grade autistic kids, and I was fired from that job. I testified for a parent about how their child was not getting the services they need and about how there was some systematic abuse going on to the autistic kids. And the district thanked me by firing me. Years later, I'm working at Ed White, and I'm working in a varying exceptionality classroom. And I go to my administration and I say, look, I can get these guys to pass the state test. I got to modify the curriculum. I got to use special, special materials, but I can get them to pass the test. And they were like, nah, Chris, don't worry about it. The truth is, we teach a lot, we treat a lot of our ESE kids like afterthoughts. That's nothing I've done. I've spent my entire life working with special needs kids. Before I was a teacher, I worked in special needs camps. And that's something that I would work hard and going forward. But, I mean, the question is great, and it's a reality that's going on, and it's something the district definitely has to address and definitely has to look at.
Thank you, Chris. And finally, Cindy?
Yeah, I think this goes back to needing more guidance counselors as well as another part of it. Students have IEPs, where they're supposed to have a conference with their teachers to go over their accommodations at the beginning of the year, and those conferences can get pushed back into September, and so they, they can be in school a month, month and a half before they have the IEP conference, and maybe all of their teachers are aware of the accommodations that they're supposed to have. And, and then parents have a hard time calling in when, when accommodations are not being offered or met. I've heard parents, many parents say that they've had a hard time following up on that. And so I think tightening up with IEPs and doing a better job addressing them earlier and then having someone following through to make sure that students are getting accommodations and that they can be a resource to the parents.
Excellent. Thank you all. This next question also comes to us tonight through the Facebook comments. What inequities, what specific inequities and equity issues do you perceive among our schools in District Three? And what will you do to address those inequities? Chris, we'll start with you for this one.
Well, we definitely have schools that seem to be getting more resources than the other schools. And let me just, there's a difference between equal resources and equitable resources. Somebody or some school might need more to be successful than another school. And so what we have to do is we have to go to each of the schools, address their, figure out what their needs are, and then we have to address them. And that's just not in District Three, though. That's across the district, across the district. But, you know, then a lot of that goes back to funding. And I, I'm banging that drum, but Tallahassee has systematically underfunded our schools. They have neglected our schools, and we have to change Tallahassee if we want to make real change. As a school board member, I can do a lot for consistent with services. I can do a lot for local teachers, but I tell you what, I can't do a lot for putting money in people's pockets. I can't do a lot for bringing in funds to take care of these inequities. I can't bring, I'll do a lot to bring in money to take care of these problems. And so what we have to do is we really have to look at Tallahassee and either make them change their mind or change them.
Thank you, Chris. Cindy, your sort of perception of the inequities and equity issues in District Three schools and what you do to address it?
Sure. So I volunteered here this year at the School Choice Expo, and I was struck by how crowded it was and how early people were lining up on a Saturday to find out what their choices were to get out of their neighborhood schools. And it made me realize we have a lot of work to do in our neighborhood schools. So rather than add more choice school programs, I really think we need to focus on neighborhood schools and especially focus on pathways. Few two families in our county have pathways where they can stay in their neighborhood and go from their elementary to their middle to their high school and feel like they have good choices all the way through. And so that has been something that as I've talked with people and as I've learned, has bubbled up as a big issue for me, is strengthening our neighborhood schools and especially the pathways to go from elementary to middle to high school without having to do all the gymnastics of figuring out how to cross town and get into programs and apply and go through the process of figuring out where you're going to go.
Awesome. Thank you, Cindy. And Bob, your thoughts or perceptions of the inequities, equity issues in District Three and how you'd address it?
Well, can you hear me, by the way? Okay, good. I want to stretch that question out a little bit. Inequities in Three, you know, again, as a substitute, I, I've gone outside of our area to, to work too. And what's interesting to me, and maybe it goes back to the last question too, you know, special needs students are special for me too, because, you know, Mike got a degree in that area, and I, my, my son had special needs, et cetera. So I, you know, won't go through all that. But the thing is, I think it's really important. It's funny, when I went to a school outside of our area into a special needs class, they had the assistant there. They kept it smaller. It was great. You know, I said, oh, this is what it should all, and I'm in, in our, my own area, I don't see it as well. And I saw, I, if there's inequities, I don't think it's just within an area. It's within the whole school system. And I think we need to work on that very much. And I know she's going to get me red, so beat you to it.
Good deal. Thank you, Bob. And thank you to everyone so far. This question is from a Zoom participant. The question is, how do you plan to work with local and state elected officials to ensure what's best for students takes priority over politics? And we'll start with Cindy.
Well, I tell, I think I've said this twice before, that watching the school board city council meeting was an eye opener for me. And so right after I filed, I reached out to several city council members, definitely the three that represent District Three, and all of the school board members, and requested meetings with them. And to this point, I've met with six of the seven school board members, and I've met with either five or six city council members. And my question to them was, you know, help me understand the political landscape of what we're working on, and how can the city and the school board work together better to produce schools that serve our families well, but also communities that support our schools? And so I've met with more than 45 people, community leaders and elected officials, trying to understand and build bridges and establish rapport with them.
Thank you, Cindy. Bob, same question?
You know, again, in my 40 years, I have gone nose to nose with governors, senators, congressmen, you know, city people here. I've already been to a state conference where I represented Duval County. You know, I have no problem. I don't cuss people out. I don't scream at them, but I convince them what they need to do. And I never give up. If they seem to give, oh, there's Bob again. Oh, my God, he's going to say this, that we got to do that. Yes, I'm very, very focused on what's needed for students and education. And I don't give up. I just wear them down. I wear them down to do what needs to be done. And I think if we had more people on the board to join me wearing folks down to what needs to be done, we'd have a better school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. And finally, Chris?
Could you repeat the question again?
This is from a Zoom user, and the question is, how do you plan to work with local and state elected officials to ensure what's best for students takes priority over politics?
Unfortunately, I'm not sure in the current climate that that's possible. Let's look at the referendum. The city council and, and mayor, they fought against the referendum, which would have brought jobs, which would have revitalized communities, which would have stopped flights to suburbs, which would have built schools, brought a stimulus to the community. They fought against that. So how can I work with people that are fighting against children in schools? And let's look at Jason Fisher on this side of town. Jason Fisher thought, said, hey, we should have an appointed city council, appointed school board. And the mayor said, no, I don't like that idea. And then he pivoted to, we should have an elected super, in an instant. He's not interested in doing what's right for our schools. Instead of working with some of our local officials that are, have shown such animus to schools, I think we need to educate the community about what they've done and about how it hurts people. We need to educate people about how important it is to fund and properly treat our public schools. I think that's a better strategy.
Awesome. Well, we're going to have to leave it there for questions tonight, just in the interest of time. But we do want to give each of our candidates an opportunity to provide closing remarks. Remember, you have two minutes each to provide those closing remarks, and we're going to go in alphabetical order, starting with Bob Abene.
Okay. Why me? Experience to me counts. You know, what Chris just said is true. I mean, we, we need to get the community involved, but we have to work with both sides of the aisle. I've stressed this is nonpartisan. I've been active in both parties. I won't tell you which party now, but I've been active in both parties at various times in my life. And there's good people and always not so good people on their thoughts in, in both parties many times. But the thing is, this is nonpartisan, and I think it's important to have somebody who can work on both sides of the aisle. But I also think it's important to have somebody with lots of experience, not in the classroom, but also in leadership roles. You know, the colleges that I had were all in bad shape. They said, Bob, we know you're good at repairing things. Would you come on in? And that's what I had to do. I had to repair the situation. I had to change. I had to enhance. I fired hardly anybody, by the way. I just switched people around. Said, you seem to be better at this. This is where we need you. So, you know, experience really does count. And if you take a look at bobforduvalschoolboard.com or facebook.com/bobforduvalschoolboard, I'm glad there's no other Bobs running. So I could, I could take that. You'll see my, I have postings all the time. I keep adding things all the time. The 1,200 people I talked to that signed my petitions, I, they were Republicans, Democrats, everything. And I asked them, and my wife would say to, when she was with me, poor thing, because she'd say, Baba, you keep talking. Why don't you just get another petition signed? I said, I want to hear what they have to say. I want to hear what they think is important. And I think that's really what taught me a lot about our community and all the good people out here that have really good ideas. So thank you so much. And the red is coming up, and I am now saying, thank you, folks. bobforduvalschoolboard.com. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bob. Now we'll hear closing remarks from Chris Guerrieri.
First, I'd like to thank JPEF and the listeners at home. And then I'd also like to thank my wife, who believes in me enough to let me run. I couldn't do this without you. District Three has some solid candidates. I really believe that. Cindy's volunteer experience is amazing. Bob's educational experience is amazing. And I don't know a lot about Coach, but you know, he's a coach, so he's probably pretty good. I hadn't met Bob or Coach before I decided to run, but I did meet Cindy, and it was at a school board meeting way back in the spring of 2016. And she not, may not remember it, but we both spoke. And what she said struck me so much, I wrote about it in my blog, and I'm going to read it to you now. It's not long, don't worry. At last night's school board meeting, a woman spoke about Wolfson High School. She said she was a proud graduate, had moved away. After 20 years, she and her family returned, and she was excited to send her now middle school age children there when they got old enough. Unfortunately, people started to tell her how bad and unsafe it was. She said, hearing this news made her sad. But then she started to hear, she started to do her homework, and the school was much better than what people had made it out to be. There was an IB program, a magnet program, and their test grades were better than at other schools you might think were better. She was really singing Wolfson praises. And then she said, please turn it into an advanced academic magnet school like Paxton and Stan. I was kind of blown away. She knew Wolfson was a good school, but she didn't care about the neighborhood kids who would have to leave or the teachers who would lose their job. Now, listen to me. In a way, Cindy should be applauded. That's what parents should do. Parents should fight, scrape. They should do whatever they can for their children. But school board members, they have to fight for every child. School board members have to fight for every teacher. And that's what I've been doing for the last 15 years, and that's what I'll do when I'm on the school board. If anybody has any questions, please reach out to Mr. G for District Three@gmail, or if you want to learn about the things I've been doing, please go to my website, mrgfordistrictthree.com. And I just want to say that we can do better than what we're doing. But all it's going to take is a little of your help.
Thank you very much, Chris. And Cindy, as we turn to you for closing remarks, you're also welcome to add 30 seconds if you'd like to address the, the information that Chris Guerrieri just provided from his blog.
So, school board is a nonpartisan office, and that's one of the things that excites me about it because we have the opportunity to build broad coalitions, to work with people who care about our public schools, and we don't have to get wrapped up in party labels. We can work, well, people who have the skill to do it can work with people that they can work with people that they agree with on certain areas and and realize that you might, that we might not agree with them in other areas and might not be able to work with them other places. But we can work together on on the things that we agree with. And and I think that's how we make progress. So I have spent a lot of time meeting with people and and trying to understand how things work in Duval County and understand education issues better. Almost every person who's met with me has said, well, I can tell that I'm not going to agree with you 100%, but I feel like you're a fair person. I think you will listen. And that's really all I can ask. And so I have some pretty broad differences in people who are supporting me. And it's, I think that's a really good skill as someone who is charged with governing, to be able to bring people together and be able to find common ground issues and make progress in those things. The story on Wolfson is is partially correct. I am a Wolfson graduate. And we, when I moved back, I was sad to hear how people were talking so poorly about my alma mater. And we, and so I started digging into it and seeing what I could do to help. And I did find out that the school was better than its reputation. But I also heard from some people that it was a school that had been neglected and maybe neglected on purpose. And it may be a school that people were just going to kind of let dwindle down in numbers. And there was an idea at the time that if it became under-enrolled, that that it could be taken over by a charter school. And I felt like it was too big of a campus and and it had too much potential to just be left, to be cut off and and left. And so I looked for ways to bring people into the school. And it was a hard, it was a hard decision to advocate for the magnet because I understand that magnet schools displace neighborhood students. But I also didn't want to see this nice campus and school roll off of our inventory altogether. And so that was, that was an exchange that we made. I would say, though, that now Wolfson as a magnet school has more neighborhood students in it than it did before. And so, and we have a diverse student body. And if you were to come to the school, it may not look like what you think a magnet school. And that's one of the things that I'm proud of stuff and that I love about our school. For the past two years, the students who have gotten alumni scholarships are first generation college students who either they or their parents started life in another country. And I love our student body and I I love the school that we're building there. And it serves kids who would not maybe get into some of the other magnet schools and gives opportunities for kids that they might not have gotten to other places.
Awesome. Well, thank you very much, Cindy. And I just want to thank each and every last one of the candidates for participating in this important community forum tonight. On behalf of the Jacksonville Public Education Fund, we just truly appreciate you all for taking the time to ensure our community has the opportunity to understand your perspective on a wide variety of very important issues in public education. To all the attendees who took time to log on, I just want to remind you of the importance of voting this election. It is critically important to make sure that you turn out to vote and that you be an informed voter. So definitely encourage you to take a look at the questionnaires that the, each of the candidates submitted on our website, as well as their websites, which they provided you throughout the the forum as well. Kids cannot vote, so our cities' children are counting on you, the adults, to elect one of these individuals who are running for office to represent them at our Duval County Public Schools. Remember, early voting is August the 3rd through the 16th, and the primary election is August the 18th. Thank you all so much again for joining us this evening. We really appreciate it. And thank you, Emily Block, for co-moderating tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.